Hi, everyone.
Yes.
Now we'll record.
Okay. Welcome everyone to the planning and zoning meeting of October 22nd, 2024. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing, a continued public hearing for Bethel 32 Henry, Henry Street, site plan, special permit.
You are forgetting the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, my God.
Introduction of numbers.
But you've been wanting to think, please forgive me, I am, not me. Okay, shall we stand up for the pledge? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, and in thy name.
We live in a justice for all.
And shall we introduce?
Jeff Rosa, alternate.
Mike Kozlowski, commissioner.
Ian Ryan, commissioner.
Kitty Grant, vice chair.
Doug Juney, alternate.
Shurraid, commissioner.
Bob Legner, commissioner.
Thank you.
Amanda Martinez, recording secretary.
Dave McCollum, gladness coordinator.
Okay. So, the first item on our agenda is a public, continued public hearing for Bethel 32 Henry Street, site plan, special permit. Yes.
Well, I do not see the applicant in the audience this evening, Madam Vice Chair.
Could he be online?
I...
I do not, uh, for 3200 Street?
I don't see him.
Madam Vice, I do not see him.
Um, so we table it for now and maybe he'll be here.
If, if, if you want to do that, then, uh, I'll leave that up to you.
Yeah, I would like to do that. And let's table it for right now, just in case he's running a little bit late.
Okay.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is Tim Draper, 9 Cunningham Park Road, 830G, affordable housing.
I'm refusing.
Six units, thank you. Okay, um, I see, I saw Mr. Draper online.
Yes.
He's driving into the town hall.
Oh, I saw his name.
Oh, I'm up here. Hold on, sorry about that.
I did see his name from there.
He probably was on, but...
Oh, were you with?
Yes.
With Tim?
I'm the only one and I'm not the guy who's...
And you are?
I'm Jim McManus, I'm a soil scientist.
Oh, yeah, we're the soil scientists, okay.
So attorney's not here and Steve's not here.
Tim, Tim is online, I see his name.
Is he?
Well, I know he's online.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe he thought this was...
It's, uh, it's...
He said he was gonna have some time since the first public hearing.
Oh, he thought he was...
Oh.
Tim, go ahead. Mr. Draper.
Raise your hand.
I saw, uh, can we un...
He can unmute himself.
Unmute yourself, uh, Mr. Draper. You have to open the queue.
Well, he can just talk.
There we go, there we go.
Oh, nevermind.
Can you hear me?
Now?
Now we can, yeah.
Thank you, um, thank you for all being there, um. Tim is on his way there, he's gonna be there in like five minutes, we thought we were the second on the agenda and I...
You know what? Um, can we take care of the business part of the meeting first and then go back to the public hearing?
Yeah, he said you're just gonna have to table it for a minute until he gets there, he's, he's on his way.
Thank you, thank you, Laura, so that's what we need to do.
Perfect, thank you.
That part of the hearing and we're going to go to the business meeting first.
Alrighty, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I said, "Thank you."
So, you're very welcome, uh, so, um... Okay, who, who is, yeah, I know, Ken Parsons isn't here.
Yep.
So I'm gonna sit, uh, Jeff for Ken Parsons and who else is here?
Uh, Paul.
And Paul, so I'm gonna sit Doug for Paul as well. Okay, so the minutes, we have three test of, uh, can we do these all at once, I think? Is there, there's no reason why we can't, right?
Unless, uh, a commissioner has a specific amendment for one of the minutes.
Well, wait, we can address them all at the same time.
I agree.
Okay, we have the minutes of 9:24:24, the minutes of 10:01:24, and the minutes of 10:08:24. Now, I think, I, I address the fact that at the 9:24 meeting, I was not here, but I did listen to the video, so we, I spoke about that last week. Um, is there anybody else who has anything else for their, any of our other meetings? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes 9:24, 10:01, and 10:08 as reported.
Okay, can I have a second?
Okay.
Three times, September 4th and October 1st.
All three.
Yep, did you get the eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I sent them all on the email.
I missed that for some reason. Okay, so Doug, and I'm sorry. Who's seconded?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody who don't know, any abstentions? So, no acceptance.
So then we can address if something's wrong or not.
That's what we should have done when I asked, does anybody have any questions about those?
What was your point in terms?
It's just, it...
For the public hearing for this, they're not using town water, they're using aquarium water.
Oh, right.
No, septic, it's not septic, it's stormwater system. That was...
Uh, Bethel proves that all the minutes beforehand, so...
Okay, so we have an invoice, a news times invoice for $1,021.75.
Make the motion, we pay the news terms, $1,021.75.
Second.
Okay, and my second? Do we have?
Yeah.
Aye.
Any abstentions, any knows, hearing none, motion passes.
And we're right back to where we started.
No, no, because there is something else we can do, there is new business, we have to set a public hearing for Brian McCann, home office detached, detached structure, 7 Milwaukee Avenue, do we have a date?
Uh, Madam Vice Chair, if, if you want to entertain, uh, this public hearing, uh, opening at your next regular meeting on November 12th, um, that agenda may be, uh, busy, but, uh, this item in terms of, uh, business, uh, would be comparatively short, uh...
Okay.
If, if staff may offer that insight with respect to the other applications that may be on that evening's agenda.
Do we know what the other items in the overall agenda are?
Uh, it, it depends on what takes place at tonight's meeting, man, um, and I, I can't recall, uh, the specific addresses that are, um, that are subject to the script for the next, uh, meeting, um...
But they're not, they're, they're not listed at the end of the agenda, so... I don't know, so...
I, I do have a question, uh, while we're discussing agendas in general, and my question is, at what point do we in the mission have discussions on submitted mobility?
Oh, the traffic?
Well, committee, parking?
Okay, can we do that after?
I'm just asking when in the agenda since we're talking.
We could do that.
That would be during, that would be during commission.
Because I have a question about that.
Right, so, so we're on to business.
Okay, so, um, would somebody like to make a motion for Mr. McCann?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for November 12th, 2024, for 7 Milwaukee Ave, a detached structure, home office, uh, for the home of Brian McCann.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. Okay. We're caught up to speed, guys. We're good.
We're ready to go, Madam Chair.
Are you ready to go?
Well, as well as ready as we're gonna be.
Wait, is Mr. Trinkus here?
No, he'd be online, hopefully.
He's gonna, yeah.
Well, do you wanna check and see if he's there?
He's not, I know he's not here.
Yeah.
Okay, should we take a...
He's the applicant, but I mean, he's my agent as I'm...
Well, he's your engineer, right?
No, 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 he's my agent, I'm the applicant, he's the agent for me. Awesome. So I can still explain why we're even here.
So you can, you can address the questions that, that we have in the various, um...
Maybe, I don't know, I just got a whole laundry list of, hold on a second before we start. Tim Draper, 48, Ant Patty's Lane West, that one.
Well, I haven't even introduced the, the, the item yet, I just wanted to make sure you were ready to go.
Well, I can answer some questions, but we just got a whole laundry list of things at 404 this afternoon from the director of health.
Oh, I, I don't know that's...
404 this afternoon.
Do you, no, but, yeah, on October 17th was a letter submitted, uh, 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 no, my God, excuse me, please. I don't have my glasses on.
Kitty, that's one new thing that we got after.
Oh, I have this for October 17th.
Yeah, we did get it updated while I had it.
Yeah. And Laura's here.
Chris put that screen through too.
Okay, so... All right.
Yeah.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Tim Draper, 48, Ant Patty's Lane West.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Trinkus may come on, uh, he's in, he's out of state right now and also on another Zoom meeting, and same with Mr. Marcus, my attorney.
Oh, Neil?
So, in all reality, the only reason that we're here, okay, is we propose an alternative plan and we just wanna make sure that you like it before we do a full-fledged build-out of this. Why this even went to Civil One and/or SLR is quite frankly beyond me, they shouldn't, it's not a full plan.
The plan I have here...
Not a full plan, Kitty.
Well, we were, no, I, 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 I'm, I'm looking at this and not this one.
Not that one.
No, it's this one here. This one here. Uh... Hold on a second. Now... But when a plan is, is submitted, it's automatically sent out by us to all of the people that we, i- i- in, in, in our town.
You can send out whoever you want, I'm just letting you know, that's not a full-fledged plan and that was known...
So that's why...
To the Bethel Building, uh, uh...
I'm sorry.
Zoning Department.
I'm sorry.
That was known to the Bethel zoning department that this is not a full-fledged plan, that's all, that has no stormwater in it, it is a conceptual plan where we move basically the septic system and the house.
The building.
Got flip flopped, the building, I'm sorry, the building.
I noticed that immediately, of course.
So what we did after September 1st, when apparently it was not dry, uh, conditions, we did additional soil testing, can I look at the date was of the...
I don't have the exact date.
Yeah, sometime about in the middle of September.
Do we have the, uh, results of that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you have them there?
Well, I have my notes, but Mr. Trinkus should have had.
You'll have them, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's...
I have my notes of where we found, uh, restricted layers, but I don't have the, the log, Mr. Trinkus did the log.
We don't have them as yet.
No, it's not on the plan because they're not full, the only reason we're here, it's an alternative plan to the one that was denied by this commission. Okay, that's all. We went there, back to the site to do additional soil testing, to make sure we could put the septic in a different area, which we did, and Mr. Mc- uh, McManus here, uh, came as a certified soil scientist, even though, and I can see that the, the first selectman's on, I did call his office and requested that the State of Connecticut Health Department, Matt Pollack, who I also called and had a 45-minute conversation.
Can I ask him?
Matt Pollack, with the state building, uh, Health Department, come down to witness the deep hole testing, soil testing on the property. He had said that he would only come out if it was requested by the town, either the Bethel Health Department or the first selectman, and neither one of them did it. So I had to hire somebody else, a certified soil scientist, to log the test holes with Mr. Trinkus, the engineer for the project.
I was more of a witness, I was more of a witness, I took a few notes, but Mr. Trinkus has the actual log and that was law, it should be in the file, but didn't...
Uh, but it's sue.
Because the health director wouldn't have been able to know what we found.
You can ask her, she's online.
Well, the Civil One wouldn't have been able to write a letter.
This one's stamped it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Civil One wouldn't have been able to write a letter indicating, uh, discrepancies between director and...
Have you read this?
Yeah. Our, our, uh, our, our conclusions and the health director's conclusions, there's only one way they would have been able to write letters if they had Mr. Trinkus's log.
Did you know this was a preliminary plan? What Mr. Director was talking about?
Madam Vice Chair, when, when an applicant submits a modification application, if I am recalling my state stat- statute sections correctly, which was filed, uh, in accordance with, uh, state statute 8-30GH, which allows an applicant to submit a modific- a modification application, uh, which, which this is a part of, of much like the original application submission, um, this plan is still subject to a- a- all of those standard parameters for reviewing the site plan, so stormwater management system, septic system, uh, the placement of the building, a- all of those associated improvements, those should be, um, those should be in, in this, a state of readiness with, with respect to what was uh, originally submitted for, for the commission to, uh, render a decision. Um, staff, um, had, had made this known that, uh, that there was only one sheet that, that was submitted and, and additional sheets may be requested by, uh, the commission's experts and the health department's experts, uh, to address any comments that they may have. Uh, the, uh, commission's engineering consultants, Todd Ritchie with SLR, uh, Laura Vassil, the, uh, director of, uh, public health, uh, Chuck Andrews, uh, the attorney for the commission and Chris Poloski of Civil One are all here, uh, to weigh in on what they've reviewed with respect to uh, this site plan, so I, I, I would defer to them, they also have submitted, uh, comments with respect to this modification application, um, and I don't, I don't want to speak on their behalf. Uh, I, I think it's best that you, uh, address each of them in individually for any comments that they may have with respect to what was submitted.
Absolutely. I, we, I get, we'll go now to our, yes.
I would get clarification from the attorneys on that, uh, you can ask Mr. Anders, he's on, he's online.
Clarification of what?
That, that this was only a preliminary plan and this is all that we're asking for, basically is, if you like the way it works, my experts say that the se- the septic will work where it is, the town, uh, experts.
We have to ask them.
Exactly, and they have different of, of opinion and there's a whole lot of different of opinion going on. So...
So, again, we're going, actually what we're doing then, uh, Mr. Draper, is going back to, uh, you said this is a preliminary plan and that's fine, but still, we will have to hear from Ms. Vassil, from Todd Ritchie and from Christopher Poloski and, and find out where they agree, perhaps where, I don't know what, how they feel about it, and then they will give you the information and then if there was a disagreement, then you will move forward with what they're saying and what you're saying to come together so we can have what is supposed to be.
The only question I would have, if, if the two engineers, Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Poloski, state that they witnessed the pits are not open. When it, with their...
Soil testing, soil testing, when they commented to Civil One.
So you, you want who to do that?
Both engineers, if... Right now, the only person I know that witnessed the pits open was me, Mr. Trinkus and the health director.
And the next day was, uh, Mr. Vassil, health director.
And that's all, now, if the other engineers witnessed the pits, that would be interesting.
Well, why, well, why don't we just go through this one at a time and ask them? Okay, uh, Todd Ritchie, would you like to go first, please? Do you have any questions or would you like to talk about, did you look at the, the soil testing pits or...
Sure, for the record, my name is Todd Ritchie, uh, licensed professional civil engineer, board-certified environmental engineer, registered environmental health specialist and registered sanitarian. I did not witness the test pits because I was not invited to and I was told that if I stepped on the property, I would be trespassing, so I guess that's the reason why Mr. Poloski also wasn't allowed to witness the test pits when he was requested by the health department to witness them along with Ms. Vassil. Um, so that's the reason why, I would, I would love to witness the test pits along with, um, the applicant's, um, professional, but we weren't, um, requested or, in my opinion, from previous statements, allowed to be on the property. Um, I would like to point out that all of, to the, to, for clarification to the commission, to the applicant, all of the test pit information is on the single plan that was submitted as the ultimate, maybe they didn't see that, but it's all right on the screen. Um... And, and I don't, I'm not sure how, um, I know Mr. McManus said he's certifying the results of this, um, so maybe he has a separate report that certifies those results. Um... But Mr., but so far, the only information is on the plan that I have that isn't even, um, stamped and sealed by Mr. Trinkus, perhaps a hard copy was submitted that has the stamp and seal on it.
At this point, Todd, the only thing I'm doing is, uh, I witnessed the pits, I haven't wrote, I haven't written any letters. I just, and I have a few handwritten notes, but other than that, I haven't put any, anything on the record.
Okay.
So, all right, so Mr. Trinkus is certifying the, uh, test pits, got it, okay. So, so a- as far as I'm concerned, that's an issue that's for the health department to, um, review and, um, that's something I'm not gonna talk further about, but I was asked if I witnessed the pits and I wanted to point out where the test pit information was because it's all on the plan. Um, other than that, I did review the plan for what it is, um, which is, uh, as the applicant acknowledged, uh, incomplete, um, submission, um, I'm not sure of the intent because I wasn't involved in the process of, um, understanding wh- what the reason was for submitting this plan as incomplete, but, um, I did provide some re- review comments according to the plan as I received it. Um, I thought they might be helpful, um, either now or in the future if this plan gets developed further. Um, so I think they kinda speak for themselves, a lot of it just has to do with the fact that there aren't grades shown on the plans or on the plan and, you know, just that's important to the overall evaluation of the, of the proposed plans, um, the stormwater system is, design is incomplete. Uh, sightlines should be shown on the plan, it is another, uh, alternate proposed driveway location and, you know, should be in compliance with, uh, providing clear sightlines and for safe stopping distances. Um, the septic system appears to be not consistent with the, uh, regulations for laying out a septic system parallel to the groundwater, uh, ground contours, the existing ground, and that affects everything else because there's separation distances to, uh, other things on the site that are required, so I would suggest that a closer look at that be taken. Um, existing conditions property survey, um, shows that the existing state roadway drains onto the property, uh, and it probably has just been that way for quite some time, so the issue with that is that that drainage onto the property, if the septic system is, um, approved at that location to be constructed, um, will potentially get flooded out by that, um, stormwater runoff from the roadway, so that's just a concern about that, perhaps curbing could, uh, alleviate that condition. Um, the location of the existing septic tank, uh, is something or, or chamber or structure should be identified, that's just something you don't wanna leave, uh, on a, you know, on, unresolved, um, as a structure. I know previously it was said that it was unknown, but it should really be investigated because it's a structure that should be removed so that there's no issue in the future with safety of, uh, underground chamber collapsing or something like that. Uh, construction fencing should be put around the final approved septic area if there is one that's approved for the project, uh, and it can be, uh, resolved with the health department, um, to protect it, you know, from the beginning of construction until the time that the, the septic leaching fields are put in and installed so that there isn't issues of disturbance and overcompaction. And, uh, a site lighting plan should be submitted, just, um, you know, to show that there will be adequate lighting for the common areas, um, for folks that will be living there and so there's just safe, um, visibility from parking spaces to the building and, you know, especially in wintertime if there's like slip and fall conditions and that sort of thing, so those are my comments, uh, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Okay, uh, Laura, do you wanna step in here?
Sure, yes, I'll do a summary of the report that, um, Mr. Draper got today and, uh, for anyone that wants to get a helicopter view of the soil types that I saw by myself because I was denied the ability to bring the consultant that I requested and Attorney Andrews has emails on that, uh, to the site with me so that all parties could work together and get into agreement, which the health department has been really seeking all along. So, there's, uh, deep hole test photos that you can look at at another time so that we could bring everybody into reading soil test observation pits together. Um, I am Laura Vassil, the director of health for the town of Bethel. Um, I am responsible to ensure the accuracy of the findings, I did, uh, take the time to do photos so to allow as many people as possible to see, uh, what we're talking about soil type-wise. Uh, there was some discrepancies between the project engineer and I about the soil tests. I'm glad to hear that this is not a final plan because it's not code compliant, you, um, one of the, everything that, um, to honor all parties, this is all listed in the review done for you and for Mr. Draper and all parties involved. The septic system is always built on the ground contours and going back to what Mr. Ritchie said, you spatial, um, allocation is really important, so there isn't the, uh, proper, um, installation ability to ground contours on this plan or the space allowable to design to the code, that's a major item. Further, the groundwater has still been, um, at the routine depths that it is this time of year and based on, uh, my research, I still believe that the groundwater is in doubt and that groundwater monitoring could resolve what its highest level on this lot is so it can be considered for MLSS hydraulic purposes as, uh, as the director of health shall do when things are in doubt. I, I listed everything I possibly could to help all parties move forward in the review done and that's why it's so long, not necessarily for me, I knew that this was non-compliant early on because of the basic missing items. And then, uh, somebody brought to my attention that when you're doing construction, that you usually talk about soil cuts and grading and you really wanna know that on this 1.2 approximately, uh, land area because effluent will travel where you weaken the soils or you put soil cuts in proximity to it. So we always look at that and make sure that effluent renovation will occur properly. Again, this is all listed, every, just as summary, uh, plain language as possible from the health department, it's, um, I, I just was really disappointed, pleading on a Saturday to have the consultant come with me so that we could just come to you, all parties together, and mediate out the soil types, the conditions so that the owner could use it for the best possible manner.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Poloski, would you like to add anything?
Good evening, everyone, can you all hear me?
Yes, we do.
Perfect, for the record, my name is Chris Poloski, I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of Connecticut, here on behalf of Civil One as requested by the Bethel Health Department, uh, so I did issue, uh, some preliminary comments on the plan that was received by this office or by my office, excuse me. on the plan that was received by this office or by my office, excuse me. Um, someone asked about, did I witness the soil testing? Uh, we requested to, or we were asked by the Bethel Health Department to um accompany Laura Vassil on the soil testing, and that was denied by the applicant. Um, so we did not want to trespass on the property. So no, I did not witness the soil testing. Uh, the comments in my review are based off the soil logs that I have received from Laura Vassil, Bethel Health Department, and the soil logs that are indicated on the plan provided, as mentioned by Todd Ritchie. Uh, I'll go over them just, my comments will just briefly. Um, number one, uh, again, you know, we are still requesting groundwater monitoring be conducted on the site. Uh, number two, there is a observed discrepancy in the soil logs recorded by Laura Vassil, Bethel Health Department, and uh the applicant's engineer and soil scientists, or I guess the soil scientist hasn't uh issued um logs yet, but it is indicated on the plan that he did provide depths to hardpan. Um, so there is a difference there. I was just pointing that out and noting the differences. Um. Number three has to do with the minimum leaching system spread. That's essentially the size of the leaching system. I believe there's some error in some calculations provided by the applicant's engineer there. Uh, number four, um, this has been mentioned twice already, but the uh proposed leaching system is supposed to follow the existing contours. Uh, number five, uh, it's unclear whether there are two buildings proposed or one. Uh, typically, an applicant will provide architectural plans, um, basic floor plans or elevations that so we can verify, so the department can verify if there are two buildings or one, because if it is two separate buildings and they're serving two separate uh sewage disposal systems, that's, you know, reviewable by the local health director. But if they're two separate buildings and there's one central system, then that gets a separate application, Connecticut DEP. So it's important that we understand that before we move forward in the process. And again, the these comments are supposed to uh be helpful in nature. Um, again, we are trying to come together to uh make the plan better. Um, some other comments, there's no proposed contour shown on the plan, so it's difficult to examine uh what the proposed grading would be. Again, I think that was mentioned previously by Todd Ritchie. Um, there's an existing house footprint down gradient, the proposed leaching system. Um, they're proposing to fill it with select fill. This can lead to a possible bleed out. Um, down gradient is a sloping site. Um, number eight, uh, again, there's no grading shown in the plan, but in order to construct these buildings, you're going to have to do some grading. This is a reminder, per the health code technical standards, you cannot have any uh grade cuts or soil disturbance fifty feet down gradient of a leaching system. Um, the stormwater collection conveyance measures, again, I understand, so now now I understand this is a preliminary plan. Uh, they are not shown uh on the plan, so those stormwater measures do need to be shown. And then they're missing the force main from the pump chamber. Um, the limits of the select fill need to be indicated. And the water line is shown, but the other utilities are not indicated on the plan. So they shall be indicated on the plan so that we can verify uh adequate separation distances to the subsoils and the leaching system. So all in all, the current plan as presented does not meet the technical standards. Uh, I think that's understood, I guess, now because it's a preliminary plan. Um, but public health and safety have not been protected. So I just want to put that on the record, and we look forward to receiving a revised plan. Thank you.
There's one other thing I'd like to read to you. On October twenty second, um, Thomas Gallagher, the fire marshal sent a a memo here and reviewing the revised site plans for the above mentioned proposal, there is no fire apparatus plan provided. A plan is needed to determine if access to maneuver fire apparatus is acceptable. Now, uh, I believe that was to everybody.
Okay, I I I'd like to address a couple of things.
Do you, do you want to offer Attorney Andres a chance to?
Oh, yeah, please, if you if you might.
Okay.
Attorney Andres, please.
Uh.
You're muted.
Thank you. Chuck Anders, attorney for the commission. Uh, just by way of background, we the we the commission, the applicant filed an original application was denied by the commission for two principal reasons. Uh, the reasons were the uh for the the sanitary sewer, the failure to uh demonstrate that the site was suitable to accommodate a uh adequate uh uh sanitary sewer for the six unit facility. It's, there was a lot of development on the site. There were wet soils. There were issues. It was formerly just a a, I believe, a single family dwelling. Um, and and that was documented. There were much reasons. So that was one reason. And the second reason was the failure to apply to Wetlands Commission. And um, and and in the decision, the commission said, hey, you know, those are the main issues you need to address. And you could do it either by filing a new application or by using the modification provision. And to the applicant utilized the modification provision, which is allowed, the applicant filed an appeal, took an appeal of the decision, but also filed a modification application. Nowhere did it say it was a conceptual plan. I think at some point along the line, Mr. Marcus may have said that to me, but I didn't see it anywhere. But but the the main, the the two principal issues were wetlands and and uh the compatibility, the soil suitability. So so obviously, those are the two main issues you need, need to address. On the wetland side, they did file Wetlands application. There's still an open issue as to whether uh they included all the regulated activities. There are some offsite wetlands and watercourses. Then uh that may be within a hundred feet and may constitute a regulated activity. Wetlands is reviewing that, but that that application is going on, and there's filling of a of a small portion of Wetlands on site. So that process is going on. And we have, zoning has thirty five days until after Wetlands decide, so that's good because otherwise you would only have sixty five days, and since Wetlands is involved, that extends the timeframe. And then the other issue is the is, as as I've mentioned, is the soil suitability issue. And and obviously, that was a critical issue in the first time around. And and I will frankly say that I was, you know, gravely disappointed uh by the applicant's re- responses here because the, we we did uh, the the Mr. Trinkus did send an email to uh Laura Basil saying, hey, can I get some dates for you to come out and witness something? And uh, uh Laura um responded and also included the other consultants, I think. I'm not sure, eh, I I know Chris, I believe was, Todd, you may have been involved in that as as well. And uh, you know, it's a selected date. And then Mister uh, they they agreed to a date of September eighteenth. Mr. Trinkus, in an email dated September seventh, said, I will take the eighteenth for you to come to the site. Quote, only you will be allowed to come on to the property. No one from Civil One or SLR is allowed on the site. I've already done preliminary test holes, so presumably didn't without that being witnessed, which I now officially uh, I will now officially excavate deep test holes for informed percolation testing. And then he went on to chastise uh Miss Vassil because she had copied the other consultants on the email. And he said, furthermore, when I list one or a few people on an email to you, I fully expect you to only send an email back to me or the other people to whom I initially sent it to. It is inappropriate for you to respond to me and copy a whole bunch of other people on the email response. She had copied them because she wanted them to go to the site and to help with the process she was talking about, and she was flatly denied. I did uh mention this issue to Neil Marcus on September eleventh because another thing this uh Vassil had asked for is some preliminary information, some plans, uh, some other information before she went to the site. That would help the information. And I s- I uh, I, in my email to Mister Marcus on Sept- again, September eleventh, again, this is a week before the actual site visit. I pointed out that I thought Mr. Trinkus was acting in bad faith. This is a conventional practice. And there was no good reason that I could see for him to prevent uh cons- town consultants from entering the site. You know, particularly if you have agree on a date and and everyone's there but saying, no, only you can come. And uh I also listed the information that that should be provided in advance. And I never heard a response. No information was provided. The other consultants weren't allowed on the site. So all I'm, I'm, I'm doing that as background because this is a central issue. The central issue, one of the central issues for the denial, there were two, was the whole, you know, septic evaluation. That that's critical. And 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 so I I would urge the applicant to work cooperatively with the with the staff, town staff and its consultants. I think they're they're trying to to look at this and and please work with them and 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 be open and and allow them to do what they need to do so they can render an evaluation on soil suitability. So so those are my comments.
Okay, I I need to address this. Okay.
Sure.
The the whole thing about the soil suitability. And everybody wants Mr. Pollock from Silver One and Mr. Ritchie from Silver One. Obviously, Laura is asking for them. Can you ask Mrs. Vassil why she didn't contact Matt Pollock at the state building, uh, or um, state health department? Excuse me? To come down and witness these deep hole tests? I asked him. He said he has to, he has to be requested by the town. I also asked Mr. Carter, our first electman, the exact same thing. How come somebody from the state of Connecticut, who she, she, she answers to them? She answers to the top, town and the state code. How come the guy from the state of Connecticut was not asked by the town of Bethel to come down here for the applicant? I'm sorry, I do not have faith in SLR or Silver One or the Bethel Health Department. That's, I'm sure you all know that, okay? This is not the first application I've been here. This is not the first application on septic systems. It's just, it's a constant with my applications. So maybe Mr. Anders should have called the state building uh uh Health Department. You know, you could have done that. You know, I was trying to be proactive. So what I had to do was hire a soil scientist, who I think everybody has to go by what the soil scientists say, not a P, not the director of health, he's going to lie exactly what it is. And all of a sudden, we come up with discrepancies of thirteen inches? This is ridiculous. It's, it really is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Draper. Um, I've been on this commission thirty one years. But, you know, I would, I listen, and I would like it now to.
I'll listen to you.
Listen to me. Uh, we have, we have people, Laura Vassil is a very respected member of this town as as the director of health. Uh, Todd Ritchie, we have worked with for men, excuse me, for many years, and we have the utmost respect for him. I have never seen a time when this commission said, okay, we cannot use our director of health, we cannot use Mr. Ritchie, whom we have used for many years, and we have to go to the state to ask them. I've never seen that.
I see that your 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 experts are biased with my.
No, I am not biased.
No, I didn't say you, Kenny. I said, your experts are biased with my applications. This is not the first one.
I'm sorry. I have read their questions. All their questions need is answers. Now, let me ask you a question. When Laura said she would like to bring Todd and Chris to witness the soil testing, why wasn't she allowed to?
How come Mr. Pollock wasn't asked to come then too?
Because we don't ask people from the state.
So you're not going to ask somebody who's in charge of the of the of the state Health Department that that she would have to answer to?
Mr. Draper, it's, excuse me, no, it is not.
Well, it is to me.
Well, it is to you, and I don't know why, because as I said to you, in thirty one years, this commission will take an application like this. We have engineers we work with. We have uh different firms we work with. And uh, I know, I don't think so. I I really hope not. Because if these questions would just be answered by your engineer and your soil scientist, that this, this application could be moved forward. These, these questions do not seem, did you read these questions?
But the one question I have is why wasn't the health director? Because I wasn't able to witness the fits when she was there. I was there baby born, and I logged my information. So Mr. Trinkus was there. And she didn't ask any questions to him because if if I had discrepancies, I would have said, hey, Steve.
Did you, were you there when she was there?
No. But.
Well, how could she ask you?
Not ask me. I said, ask Steve. If I was her and I had a thirteen inch discrepancy, I would have called him over and said, excuse me, I got a thirteen inch discrepancies. What were you seeing that I'm not seeing, and what am I not seeing that you saw? And she didn't ask any questions. She just logged her own information, and we may have a report in front of us. I've never had that.
Well, hold on one second.
Never seen that happen.
So sir, do you know that for sure?
That's what I was.
Not being there?
Why do we have?
Do you know that for sure?
Why would a thirteen inch discrepancy be allowed to happen if you all had a discussion on the site?
Because, because Mr. Trinkus said there was no discussion to be had, sir. He said, these are my holes. You take them. I'm done. You don't even have to read that. We don't do that. Most of the people in the region don't do that since we do ensure the accuracy of findings. But there are the photos, and nobody made those up, so you can go back. Uh, health departments don't want to see discrepancies. I actually begged to have whomever the applicant wanted and the director of health and the consultant with us to mediate that exactly like you said, because that's how I'm trained for thirty eight years. But the engineer did not want to do that.
Well, I, I, that's, that's beyond.
I feel bad that you said that.
Well, let me ask you a question. When you read your test bits, do you read them from the top or do you actually climb inside the pit itself?
I usually climb in the pit and to the side. I don't know if I'm on the stand. I don't know you, but if you look at the photos, I tried very hard to give anybody an observation of the variation that exists.
But that's.
In fact, aren't you surprised?
Very, I honestly don't know how, I don't know what you were looking at when you came up with.
Well, you can look at the photos of the holes. Because those are the holes.
At the real hole in front of me.
Oh, no, no, but the photos are pretty clear. And if you look like one thing from my thirty eight years.
Put the photos up.
Have miscellaneous fill?
Kenny.
Yeah.
Would you gain control here so that?
Oh, well, I I I I thought I didn't realize you would, this would turn out to be an argument.
It's gonna be, because discrepancies are way off, and I'm a little, I'm a little.
Mr. McMahon is, please, I will not listen to this. If you want to have a conversation, that's, no, no, you're arguing. And I will not accept that for us.
I'm not arguing. I'm, I'm, I'm disagreeing with her, her results. It's not.
Okay, well, that's why we wanted to all be together. Did you happen to see miscellaneous fill on original soil?
Only on one pit that was, only on one pit that had the water main, and it was only at by the street. The remainder of the pit was, had natural soil characteristics.
Yeah, because it were variations. I actually, the photos, there's a, um, David has put them online, and you could look at them if you want because I'm pretty transparent. And so I actually think in the front yard, like the Google shot show where the driveway was and where there was a some compaction, there's some miscellaneous fill, and then there's an original soil layer that wasn't called out. But again, I'm not trying to argue with you. I believe, and it's written in the third or fourth page of my review, that there are certainly ways to develop this. You just have to use the most suitable septic areas to do so. And so I, we want to move forward. And I do want the consultant to be out there, and I want us to mediate that on site.
I think, I think right now what has to happen is I think you people have to come together. And you have to look at this from the same perspective, from the same view, and then come back and bring us the information. Rather than everybody having a different opinion at the same time. I don't, I I think you really have to be able to look at it as a whole. We would like this to move forward.
Can I ask? I hear you, Kenny. This is. We came here to see if you like where it was going to go, and now all of a sudden, now there's discrepancies in these holes. I want to, I'd like to have, I can ask any of the sanitarians, there's three of them right there. What's, what's the depth restricted layer? Any, all, any three of you can ask that question. This is the first question I asked Matt Pollock. What is the depth of restricted layer? And I'm not an engineer, but I am a a an installer.
Yeah, but there's a paragraph there, Tim, and I spelled it out for you.
Simple question. It's an inch.
It is. It's always a simple question. Let's read it. It's in your letter.
Kenny, you can't even answer a simple question?
I don't want to be exact for you. I want to work.
What is the technical standards for the state of Connecticut?
This is not working.
Where any new system where the soil conditions in the area of the system are unsuitable for sewage disposal at the time of the investigation. Unsuitable conditions occur where existing soil is impervious or where there's less than four feet of suitable soil over ledge, two feet of which is naturally occurring, or where there is less than eighteen inches depth of suitable soil.
Or where there is less than eighteen inches depth of suitable soil over impervious soil. Or where the groundwater is less than eighteen inches below the surface of the ground. For a duration of one month or longer during the wettest season of the year.
I believe she's reading you the regulation and the law.
I know what it is. It's eighteen inches, but she couldn't answer one simple question. She had to go all the way around the world about it.
I think she just did.
You know, you know what? Why didn't, really simple. How come they didn't have the state? Are they afraid to have the state here? I, I, I don't know. Listen Kitty, I don't know.
I don't agree with you. We do not have the state down when this commission makes a call. We call the people we have here working for us.
But when I have a discrepancy with the, with the town, when I have a discrepancy, I have to go to the state. If I have a discrepancy at the building department, I have to go to the state. If I have a discrepancy with the health department, I have to go to the state.
Discrepancy, that you're disagreeing with that?
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry, but disagreement, work, why can't you sit with Todd Ritchie? Oh, Mr., oh, not you, uh, Mr. Trinkus. And why can't they work it out? Because I'll, well. I'll tell you what Mr. Mr. Trinkus will say. That's it, it's over, that's what I've done.
And then Mr. Ritchie could say, this is it, that's it, that's all that's done also. Because he's your expert.
No, no.
Trinkus is my expert.
No.
And it's the town of Bethel's expert. He doesn't work just for the commission, he works for the taxpayers.
And so.
And I'm a taxpayer also.
And so do we, and so does everybody else.
I know. So he works for everybody.
That's right, but why can't his questions be answered?
He can, they can be answered. This is a preliminary plan. I've said that already. This is not a finished plan.
That's right. And so, so now what, rather than.
Here, this is just like the wetland.
No, no.
I don't know.
My question.
Mr. Andrews should counsel, since he's the town council, counsel us.
Would you think?
My, I, I'm, my, my suggestion is we continue the hearing and allow your applicant to respond. You said, uh, you, you allow, uh, meeting if, if, if the town officials or town consultants would like to get to the site. Perhaps with you guys, you allow that. And, and, and then we try to get it done before the next hearing and see what get resolved.
I want to say there, why can't Laura Vassil, director of health, just make a phone call or an email to her boss at the state?
Have someone you call, no.
It's not somebody for me. No, this is, this is an unbiased person.
Tim, what I'm going to say is, we have, we have five reports here. I would like you and Mr. Trinkus and perhaps Mr. McManus to sit down, go over these, point out. What, what is wrong with them? Where you can work together and where we can make this, where we can make this a whole application. If this is preliminary, the answering all these questions together will make it whole. Is that not what usually happens? And I know it happens for every other single planning and zoning item that comes on our agenda. We work together with the applicants, we work together with the experts. And we come to a solution on how to make it better, how to make it whole.
Madam Chair, this is, uh, Dan Carter on here. I, I, I do wanna respond to the applicant because of the question regarding why the state was not involved. I was kinda hoping somebody might have spoke up already. The reason that the state did not come down is because the state is the applicant's appeal authority. Basically, if the, if the health director would have made the decision in this, the applicant has like a timeframe, a few days to apply to the state for. Uh, you know, for the state to weigh in. That's why at this point, the state wasn't brought in. Um, I was hoping that the health director might have mentioned that, but that's, that was a conversation that happened. Because again, the state could be the appeal authority. Madam Chairman, I just wanna make sure you understood that.
No, I do. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Carter. That, as, as you said, the state. When none of this works. And, and we need somebody help. We need a higher authority, shall we say, help bring us together. So right now, we need all of these questions answered. And for you hopefully to work together to make this. A beautiful application and a beautiful site.
I'm sorry Kitty, but it doesn't seem like they wanna work with me. This is not the first application. This is five eight dash thirty G applications I've done. Not one of them's gone smoothly, not one. And it's been diff, I'm sorry.
I do believe the national road went very well.
No, it didn't.
Excuse me, I know it did.
I know.
I was here, remember?
That was probably the best.
I was, I was here right now tonight to compliment you on your stairs.
Madam Vice Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
And you're just saying, oh, that's not me, that's my wife, that's.
I know, I know it is.
Just, just as a brief point of clarification, if I may offer before you, uh, go, go out to, uh, the public for any comments. Or the, uh, uh, the applicant line if they, if they have any comments.
Right.
This is a site plan.
I know.
This is not a subdivision. This is not feasibility. This is actuality. So the applicant needs to demonstrate. If, if this is a preliminary plan, so noted. But at, at some point, you are going to have to receive information to substantiate a, a full site plan. That, um, is reviewed by your experts and, um, uh, uh. I, i- is, 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 um. Prepared or revised in such a way to make sure all of their comments are satisfactorily addressed. Um, so, so that's, i- if, if there's any takeaway from, from the discussion thus far. That's where, that's where we are. Is that there is more information that is needed.
Oh, good then.
I've never said it wasn't. We, I, I've said it, this is a preliminary thing. We just wanted to see if you guys were interested in us moving the septic to the front. Which, we did default testing, will support the septic system in the building into the middle. And the stormwater will be moved up if, if it's in the upland review, which is still sus- uh, suspect in the wetland aside.
We cannot, we cannot say that until our experts say that that is doable. Correct, Mr. McManus?
We just hoped, we, we only, we just hope that the septic system wouldn't be such a stumbling block as it is.
And here it is now. So I'm not gonna spend a ton of money to redo this whole thing when they can't even, I have.
With that Laura, you mean Laura Vassil?
Uh, yeah, yeah, well, it would be, that's a discrepancy between Laura Vassil, Steve Trinkus and Jim McManus. There's a discrepancy there.
Alright, so, so in other words, Mr. McManus, Laura Vassil and Mr. Trinkus have to work together to, uh. Figure out what, how this plan is going to work.
I don't, I don't know how you have a thirteen inch discrepancy. Well.
Well, let's go out there with the consultant and I, and let's, we, we need more soil testing anyway. Because we're not on the ground contours. And let's find a septic area that will, will support the six bedroom, uh, multifamily unit. Let's do it.
Doesn't that sound logical, Mr. Draper?
Yeah, and I would also still like the, the, the state there.
The state will come if there's a problem.
You know, see, why?
Oh, oh, where am?
I, oh, there's issues with your experts and my experts, okay? It's contentious every meeting. Every meeting is contentious. Everyone. I'm tired of it. That's why I'm hot tonight. I don't wanna be here. I really don't wanna be here. I could say, hell, heck with it and, and just keep on with the appeal. You know, I came here for a zoning permit, not for a septic permit two months ago. So. Well. I.
I thought Mr. Trinkus would be here.
Well, unfortunately, he was not able to do it. That's a disappointment, but.
Oh my god.
As my, um. As, uh, if I could say something, I guess, I would like to have a powwow.
With Laura Vassil?
With everybody who needs to be there.
Well, it seems to me that the septic.
We don't need the consulting engineers there. We can.
We do, I do, Mr. McManus. Just like Tim brought you in. I have, just, just for the same reasons that Tim said, it's a courteous thing. You're not my consultant, but this, the, the consultant that is here is to help me assure accuracy. And so I appreciate it and I wanna work with you and I wanna work with Steve Trinkus and the applicant. I'm trained for thirty-eight years to find the most suitable septic area on ground contours and code compliance to get out of the picture. But if somebody wants to keep submitting things that are non-code compliant on the health department's track.
We didn't submit something that was non-code compliant. You just didn't agree with what we came up with, with the soil descriptions.
Thank you.
I've had a many, many, many decades of experience myself and I've worked from Maine to Florida as far west as Minnesota. So I've seen a few things in my day too. So that is the difference. We didn't have a non-code compliant, that's your opinion. We have an alternate opinion and that's why we wanna rectify this.
So Laura, could you meet with, uh, with Mr. McManus?
I would want, uh, Chris to be with me and I would be delighted to onsite. And I'd like him to look at the photos too, if he could, or I'll try to ha- get help from the town so he can see them.
Pits, we just look at the pits. The decision.
And, and right now, like, it's not code compliant, the plan. We just never would come to you and say something was non-code compliant if it was. That's just not the professionals involved. You build to ground contours. So what, if we, we, uh, if the best septic area and the best space was allocated. There are several, as people have mentioned in the audience, this, these land could be developed with this concept. But you have to allocate the appropriate septic size space and you have to do it in the most suitable soils. And fit all the other items that all the professionals listed as a courtesy to the applicant in the picture. And I do think, as I said to many people, it could be done, but you gotta do it.
Okay, so as I said, uh, Mr. Draper, I think you all have to work together and come back with it. The answers, their questions, your questions and work together.
The only answer is soil, the difference. Everything's, everything is setting, everything is built around the septic.
Whatever everybody said, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a soil scientist. So, uh, did you have something you wanna end?
No, I just wanna see if anyone from the public.
Oh, well, we'll have to do that next, yes. Okay, so, alright, so, do we have any further questions from the public? You know? David?
The, the Timothy Draper, that's on who will meet, have their hand.
Oh, that, no, that's Mrs., that's Mrs. Draper.
Right.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Um, I'm listening to the whole thing and I'm watching all your experts. But we have experts too. And they seem to not conclude, so I'm thinking, again, as Tim said. We need the state to come in, period. We do. And, and Laura, I don't know why you're shaking your head, but you know. You could have called him in, Dan, you could have called him in and we could have, like, figured this out easily. But, you know, it. Yeah, I'm looking at some of the faces on here. This is crazy. It's, we're all trying to come to the same conclusion and trying to get this done. And it's harder than it has to be. And it's costing the taxpayers a lot of money with all these experts on your side. Who, I think some of them are not giving you the right information. And, uh, you know, uh, I'm just gonna say, I think. That we need the state to be there anytime anything happens, because we're never gonna come to the right conclusion. You know, i- i- it's like everything has been really hard every time the Drapers have tried to do something. Every time. Kitty, I know you could, you know, make an argument with that, you know, but it's true. And everybody wants affordable housing, but every time the Drapers try to do it, it's a problem. So, let's just cut to the chase, okay? Let's get the state in there. Dan, Laura, you call them in, because when we talked to him, he said that was the only way he was gonna come. That's somebody that isn't on your side or our side and then we can figure this out. Because we all want to figure this out. And, and it's getting difficult and it's costing not only the Drapers a lot of money, but it's costing the taxpayers a lot of money. I mean, Todd Ritchie, Charles Andrew, you know, it, it. Let's just figure this out.
Laura, let me just jump in for a second. The only thing I would say was, uh. You folks never see me because the only time I ever show up when it deals onsite septic stuff is when I'm a tiebreaker.
I'm sorry, who, who's talking right now? I don't.
No, it's you coming tiebreaker. And when that usually happens, when I come in, the state is always there.
I want the state to come in.
Because I'm the tiebreaker. So the state always comes down and witnesses my results.
But they didn't come down and I want the state to come in.
Well, well, again, we, we, they didn't come down, Laura, because we didn't, we didn't, we weren't here yet. We weren't at the discrepancy part.
Because none of these questions have been answered yet.
They also, we, we, we also weren't, we didn't know what Laura was gonna find. In, in her, in her conclusions, so.
In her twenty-page report. Okay, that's fine, that's fine, but what, what I'm saying is, we're trying to be proactive. Because we know that there's always a problem, always a problem. There's been a problem from Ledge Woods to Oakwoods to Shelley Woods, always a problem. So we're trying to be proactive. And, and you guys keep talking about how you have so many experts. Well, we have experts too. But nobody wants to listen to them, so we need somebody. To come in and be, you know, objective and, and, you know, not listen to one side or the other, but to do the right thing. And, and, and this is getting old. I mean, how much money are we gonna cost the taxpayers? Seriously? Uh, uh, this is getting old.
As I said. What I would like to see, before you bring in tiebreakers.
My, my tiebreaker.
Excuse me, well, we don't have a tie yet, because nobody has answered the questions from our experts, Mr. Trinkus, as yet.
So.
Because you don't believe our experts, so you keep bringing in yours.
I don't believe, I, this gentleman is here, I, did I tell you I don't believe you? Don't think I did that.
Oh, I'm kidding. You know, it, it, it's like, it, it's always a fight, one between the other. Let, let's just cut to the chase and get the expert in here.
Let me just let you know. Let Mr. McCollum.
Let's just do that. How much money are we gonna cost the taxpayers?
Uh, Mrs. Draper, I would like Mr. McCollum to speak first, please.
I.
It should be noted, as, uh, Ms. Vassil just, uh, mentioned earlier in this discussion. Her response, her review comments, she's dated today. They were just sent to the applicant this afternoon.
Right.
And I believe, uh, Mr. Ritchie's comment, I, I, I don't know if, if Mr. Trinkus has had the time that he's needed. To review, um, uh, uh, to, to review Mr. Ritchie's comments.
That's what, that's what I've asked three times and no one's answered that.
Right, right, so, so without trying to speak for the applicant's project engineer. I, I don't know how much time they would need to provide a response to your comments. But it, it's, it's, it's my understanding that, that the commission is making it known. That the applicant needs to respond to those comments in one way or another.
Before we go further, we need these. These comments addressed. And I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable. It's happened every single application I've ever sat on. If, if Mr. Trinkus could look at this and answer these questions or herself to answer these questions. And then come back and give us answers to these. And, and. We, we do this one step at a time. I'm not going to go to the, we don't go to the state in order to make, I, I, I don't know. We've never done it. As I said, in my thirty-one years, I've never seen it.
The issue is Kitty, there's a discrepancy.
There's a discrepancy where?
Where? That's what we've been talking about, between the soil lines. That's where the discrepancy is.
But had, had any of these questions been answered?
We just got them, so. We just got one at four o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, Tim, so come back in two weeks and answer them. Or, or even better, work with Mr. Trinkus. And Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Pulaski and Ms. Vassil. And figure out the answers to the questions.
Soon as Matt Pollack works with us also from the state of Connecticut.
We have some soil lines that we are in agreement about, the first set. So we have some soils that, so that wasn't the biggest, I mean, it's a concern, the groundwater monitoring is gonna be critical. Um, and the height of it, the maximum height, but the, I, I. We had some holes that we, both agencies. But the, I, I, we had some holes that we, both agencies agreed upon. Um, the issues about not being on ground contours as a primary element is so critical. It just has to be worked out by the applicant, then we know how much more soil testing we need. And I, I had full faith that whoever Tim wanted to bring, we could all work together. And because we have one set that there was no discrepancy, and then we had a front area of a long-time developed property where there was a driveway, there may have been worked soils. So I think the photos show fairly clearly the variation of things of the soil type from a property that was developed a long time ago. I wasn't surprised by any of it. So we have a set that we've all somewhat agreed to. I really didn't get into it about the perk test at this time. But I, I, it's unfortunate that this was set up this way. I would have loved to have been out there with Chris and Todd and the, uh, wetlands officer of Tim's and, and mediated it out the way he started. That's how we're all trained.
McManus at the same time.
Yes, that's what I mean. That's what I mean by the wetlands, uh, agent.
Uh, do anybody else on the commission have anything they would like to add to this? Anyone?
You know, in my opinion, I mean, I hear what everyone's saying, you know, we just found out it's more conceptual nature, and the applicant's asking our experts if we think this is going in the right direction. Before he spends a lot of money, I can understand that, and I can, I can appreciate that, because there's, there's, there's a lot of money being spent, there's a lot of time being spent by everybody here. Soil logs aside, soil testing aside, who's going there, who's doing what? The simple question I want to answer from experts is, is this going in the right direction? Is this a better conceptual layout than what we previously had denied? That's what I wanna know, and I think that's what he wants to know. And I know, maybe it wasn't done the right way with how the application was, maybe it could have just came in as a conceptual layout. I have no idea all that legal side of it. But is it going in the right direction? All the other stuff aside, I understand, you know, it's not a full-site plan application, and we don't have all our soil, you know, everyone's on an agreement on the soil logs. But is there a simple answer to that? Is it going in the right direction? Yes or no? That's all I want.
I think if we were looking at more septic area of, to accommodate the, the proposed basis of design, they would be. I'm going out on a limb here, because I'm not the designer, and we've been, again, people can submit non-code compliant plans, and we all look at them. But there's a lot of area that has not been investigated that could be the best septic areas on the property. And that's how, uh, that's normally what we do. We say, what's the best septic areas on the property? Is it the ground contours? Let's use it. And then, as Tim said before, you tuck all the other elements in around that. And I still think that some work has to be done. I threw, I just, uh, I didn't do four pages just because. I put out there everything a designer could use to move forward.
Do you have any more? Diane?
You have a walk through on Saturday with Inland Wetlands.
You're welcome to come.
What are you doing at that?
Well, I, quite frankly, I'm not quite sure, since there's no wetlands on the property. Is there wetlands on the property from, from SLR's report?
There is an area, if, if I may respond to that.
Is it wetlands?
This is right. There is an area of poorly drained soils, which is, which is how the applicant phrased, uh, their application. And, uh, poorly drained soils are considered to be regulated wetlands areas.
Let me, uh, I will.
Hold on, are we going down the wet, this is not a wetland.
No, 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 I just wanted, I, I just wanted to say something. This is not a wetland, but in the world of wetlands, in the world of wetlands, the law indicates there's no size requirement. However, if for thirty-plus, thirty-five-plus years that I've been doing this, if I can easily jump over an area, which this is, it's a two-by-two area, which can easy, anybody here can jump over that area, I don't include it in my wetland delineation. In, in, in a world of soil mapping, it's a small inclusion, poorly drained soils and otherwise upland mapping unit. And that's how it would be indicated, and if you read my reports, that's what I said, and I didn't indicate any wetlands on the site, because it's too small. It's an unmapable area. It's an inclusion in an otherwise upland mapping unit. We're having a discussion at the, in the wetlands level about that.
So if you're, you're more than welcome to come. It'll look the same as you did last time, and you will say the supposed pool that was there, as I was told by somebody, one of your experts said the supposed pool, so I guess that means I'm a liar, that it wasn't a pool.
Yeah.
That's exactly what he said.
I guess my question is, are you going to, to map out where, where the septic?
You can see where the deep holes.
Where this new plan, the septic is, because we did the walkthrough initially.
Yeah, it's in the front of the house and then on the side.
Right, I know, but, but sometimes we map those.
I gave you an idea where it's at. I'm not having a surveyor come out there and stake you, that's what I'm saying.
Not for two, not for Saturday? I don't think so. Okay. Oh, Bob Legner, do you have any you wanna add, Bob?
Just, uh, I, 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 at some point, we, we, we need some agreement and compromise.
That'd be nice.
On what the system is gonna be. And I think we, we determined what our expert said, that the last plan that we denied wasn't the best plan that could be put on that piece of property. So come time to move it around and, and, and come up with a new plan, I think as many of the experts should have been available to help plot out that plan and come to the agreement before we got to this point at the meeting. I think, I, I'm, I'm with Chuck, I'm a little disappointed that this thing didn't go a little smoother and get to this point in time. Apparently, i- i- it didn't work out, because you, you can't disavow some of the members of our expert crew and then say, oh, everything's fine. Thank you.
As I said, I think right now the most important thing is this is your conceptual plan you've called in, huh? Okay? Okay, so you have all our comments about it. So when you're coming to, come back with a final plan, hopefully you will talk, you, and Mr. Trinkus will speak to Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Paul, Pulaski, uh, and to Laura, and to Mr. McManus, and we'll work together to come up with a final plan where everyone's comment will be witnessed on that plan. And that's where we are. So, we'll see you in two weeks.
Won't see me in two weeks.
Well, hopefully, we'll, we'll see him and Mr. Trinkus in two weeks. So we will, um, continue this in two weeks.
To our November twelfth regular.
November twelfth.
That's the, uh, uh, the next regular schedule.
That's when we're here again. Okay.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Lucille, Mr. Pollock, and Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Andrews. We thank you very much for joining us.
Guys, I hope you all get to work together for now to make a perfect plan for our next meeting, or for the one, two weeks after that. Thank you, Chuck. Good night, Todd. Good night, Laura. Good night, Chris.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Chuck.
Okay, so, what we have now is commission's comments. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, yeah, don't pay any attention to the comments. After that, I'm burning.
So, i- in lieu of the applicant not being, in lieu of the applicant not attending tonight's meeting, I, I will advise the commission that, um, staff met with the applicant on site to address some of the, um, uh, flood zone and flood plain management related comments from Mr. Ritchie. And it is noted that there is what's called a letter of map amendments that was acquired for this property back in two thousand and six. That, that, that essentially says, um, you know, so, some of the comments that have been raised by SLR are non-starters, for lack of better words. It, it, that should have been presented to this commission by the applicant. Um, it, it should be noted that, uh, staff had to do a lot of research to, to, uh, to figure that out, uh, and, uh, not that I can take credit for that, but this was Beth Cavagna that did this work. Um, so, um, she hashed out, uh, that letter of map amendments and, um, the revisions that, um, you know, are, are subsequent to that with, uh, the commission's engineering consultant, Todd Ritchie. Uh, to, to my knowledge, his comments are satisfactorily addressed. If this commission doesn't have any other things to discuss, uh, if you are so inclined to close this public hearing and go into, um, a, uh, a work session to discuss this application, uh, staff has no issues with you doing that at this time.
Hey, you said a letter of map amendment, and we don't, we don't have a copy of that anywhere to review. I mean, usually a letter of map amendment is, is
We don't have it.
Assigned to a building on the property, not the entire site.
I, I didn't receive that either. I did receive a letter from Beth, but it seemed like a programmatic letter about um, FEMA requirements for the town. And I wasn't briefed on what the status is, uh, as you described with your meeting with the applicant.
Okay, okay, uh, I, I had, I, I apologize. I, I had thought that, um, Ms. Cavagna had, had done all those things to clarify that. Uh, I, I will make a point to how the letter of map amendment entered in for, uh, for the record. Um, I, I can get copies of that, uh, to SLR and, uh, add it to, uh, the Google Drive, um.
I mean, if I, if I may say, uh, it is important, because currently the FEMA maps and the information, uh, included in the town GIS, as well as FEMA maps, uh, don't specifically, they, they, they represent it as still being in the flood zone, so. Uh, this, if it does remove it from, if it's a letter of map revision, ultimately a LOMA ends up with a LOMAR, which is a letter of map revision, often. Um, then that would basically take it out of the flood zone, and it would satisfy, uh, the points you're making.
Um, so do we have that, or?
The, the letter of map amendment, if, if you want me to try to retrieve it in, uh, Ms. Cavagna's office, if, if you wanna enter, uh, enter me to. I, um, that's true, but I, I'd, I'd be happy to recite it for the, for the record if, if.
Would that be enough, Todd? If we just read it to?
Yeah, if you, if you want to, and we can all kind of listen together and can make, draw the same conclusions, I guess, so.
Let me see, let me see if I can find that. Do you, do you wanna give me two minutes to look through that?
We'll take a five-minute break.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Sure.
Make a motion to take a five-minute break?
Second.
On favor?
Uh, there, most of that is. Go off recording. Please.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so, so we are, we are resuming discussion for, or the, uh, discussion for, um, okay, so, the the case number that was assigned for, um, this letters of map change, zero-six dash zero-one dash B fifty A issued October twenty-six, two thousand and six for map panel zero-nine zero-zero-one C zero-two-three-one F, uh, zone X, I, I am, uh, trying to look through, um, where this is, 'cause, 'cause, uh.
David, what's, what's the reason for the LOMA? Were they proposing development within the flood zone? I thought they were above the flood zone anyways.
So, so, so the entirety of the property, uh, ba- based on the firm panel map, um, it shows the entirety, the entirety of the property, and moreover, this subject's area for this application is being in a flood zone.
One hundred and forty-nine.
Right, so, uh, that, that's, that's why the, the, the comment was initially raised. Um, I'm, I'm just trying to find the document that, that speaks to, um, the October twenty-six, two thousand and six report that I just mentioned. Uh, 'cause Beth had showed it to me before, um, she was out of office this week, and I wish I had kept a tab of where it was. I apologize. Um, the, the reason why I, I'm, I'm trying to do this on the fly right now, I, I don't know, uh, what time the, the commission has left to, to review this application. If, if I'm recalling correctly, um, we, the applicant granted an extension for this application to be continued to this meeting, uh, at the last meeting, uh, when this was discussed back.
Only for two weeks?
Well, it, it would not happen in two weeks, Madam Vice Chair, because on, on the meeting for the October the eighth, that was a meeting to discuss TOD.
Oh, all right.
So, so this would have been the meeting back in September, uh, twenty-fourth, Madam Vice Chair. So I, I'm just trying to.
David, uh, on page two of three, there's a table of, uh, at the top that, uh, lists thirty-two Henry Street, Building One. I'm not sure what Building One is, but it says an old panel and a new panel.
It's a verbal extension for thirty days.
Right, so, so, uh, the, the Building One is the building that is closest, is the existing building that is closest to the end of Henry Street. Um, that, that, that part I do remember. Uh, 'cause there are more than one, uh, uh, metal buildings or butter buildings or what have you that are on the property. Uh, Building One that's in question, if, if, if I can show, uh, the property on the Bethel GIS. That would have been the twenty-second.
On September twenty-fourth, it was done for thirty days, so this is the end.
This is all.
Here's, this is it. I've got it. It's right here in my notes.
October, uh, yeah, October first, we are at a special meeting.
I'm sorry?
October first.
Right, October first.
October first. Yeah.
I have, I have it for September twenty-fourth.
No, we had a special meeting October first.
I know that, but I mean, on October twenty-fourth, I adhere verbal extension for thirty days of Henry Street.
Yeah, so they gave the, they gave the, um, thirty-day extension on October first. I have that right here.
That, that's, that's my apologies, so, so, um.
Whatever, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, let me go to. So, so, so there was, there was a meeting on September twenty-fourth. And then there was a special meeting held on October first for this application and for twenty-two twenty-four. Um, this, this comment was still outstanding at that special meeting, so it was hoped for it to be addressed at, at tonight's meeting. And, and the information, uh, I, I, I saw had been discussed to, to do that, but it, it, it seems that it has not. I am trying to find this, uh, this second page, uh, to, to reflect, um. Right, thirty-two Henry Street, Building One. So, so Building One, can you all see my cursor? Building One is, is the, is, uh, the building that is closest to the end of, uh, Henry Street on the subject's property. It's, it's where my cursor is. And the, um, the applicant is looking to place their structure in this area of the property without having, uh, their site plan up on the screen. So it, it would be closer to the end of Henry Street than Building One is. Okay. Let me see if I can look this up on.
So by, um, the letter of map amendment means, if, if the letter of map amendment exists in there, that means that they're not in the flood zone, so now they don't have a whole bunch of other stipulations. that means that they're not in the flood zone, so now they don't have a whole bunch of other stipulations to do, right?
Um.
I just, I know we had questions about the hydrofloors and stuff like that, but now they're saying they're not in the flood zone.
Correct, yeah, correct, if I may, Todd Ritchie for the record. Um, but it is, it is specific to the Building One, the building, not the, not necessarily the site.
Right.
You know, so so like, in my opinion, i- if that's the case, then it's written towards a building. And if another building would, in this case, is put on the site, then that would also require the same thing. If not, if if it's not compli-, you know, if it's not compliant with the actual flood zone. But I'm not, David, I guess I get back to is like, is there an issue with complying with with the flood zone? I mean, I thought they were proposing a, once we got the, finally got the uh actual A two T two survey, that they were complying with the uh the requirements for first finished floor above um flood elevation.
Right, right, um, uh, um, the uh, if if I'm recalling correctly, the the applicant had uh some spot elevations that were confirmed um by a uh professional land surveyor. Um, I I'm trying to uh find find the plans that that show that. Um.
Yeah, it, while you're doing that, if I may just um summarize for the commission, my my only concern was that looking at the, I'm also looking at the mapping, not only on GIS, but on the um the FEMA website of uh that both of them include that area in the a hundred year flood zone. Um, so we're not having a a s- a survey that covered the elevations in that area uh submitted for the application um that was based on, well, we didn't have anything uh for elevations for the matter, but particularly one that was based on the um FEMA uh flood datum. Um, it it wasn't, I wasn't able to tell whether that um proposed finished floor elevation um was compliant with the town requirements for being um a vertical separation of flood uh, the flood elevation. So now we've received that survey, to my knowledge. Uh, and it appears is, or that it can be brought into compliance if it's not. I think it was a couple feet uh above. Yeah. If I'm not mistaken.
I believe that's what they said.
Um, let me, let me see if I can find the uh, oh, got it right here. That helps.
Just a map, huh?
Revision date of October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, to add three spot elevations shown here on only, vertical datum, N A V D nineteen eighty eight, based on GPS location, based on C dot Acorn, topography shown here on field, determined by Trinkus Engineering LLC.
Now, David, I'm sorry, David, um, when uh I believe the best was provided with an actual uh certified survey.
Yes, yes.
Is that the, what you're talking about?
Yes, I have, I'm looking at a uh New England land surveying uh uh map revised or dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty one, revised October sixteen, twenty twenty four. And it shows um, it 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 shows the note that I uh mentioned, if I may finish it.
Sure, sorry.
LS number one, two, eight, seven, three, refer to site development plan dated eight, one, twenty four, revised ten, fifteen, twenty four by Trinkus Engineering LLC. Um, okay. Let me make sure this is here. You. I'm just trying to find the document that speaks to.
This is on here. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna be looking for, yeah. What were you on the other map? I haven't seen them.
Todd, did you, did you get a chance to look at that survey? Did Beth send that to you?
No.
Okay.
I think she, she gave me um, she gave me a hard copy and I misplaced it, but I did look, so sorry about that. I I I looked at it before I did, and uh it looked like uh, it looked like the elevation of was very close to what Ms. Mr. Trinkus was representing on his plans. Um, so as far, as far as that goes, it was a certification of essentially what Mr. Trinkus was providing on his plans. Very close to.
Right.
So do we have the information we need?
I I think you, yeah, I think that's the point, y- you have the information you need. Uh, I don't know what the, about the discussions about the removal of that uh Building One, and that seems like a standalone uh for that building, so I I think you're, with conditions that this new building, you know, needs to comply with applicable um uh town flood regulations uh and standards. I I believe it does, uh again, I not having that map, but I I did review everything previously and the, and the elevations are are consistent now that it's certified.
That's not on the Google Drive.
But I, but I think for the sake of, if, for your approval condition, and you say that, you know, it needs to comply with applicable.
Conditional, I got it.
You got it, yep.
So we can, we can move forward on this, we can make a motion to close this, is what it sounds like, we have information on it.
I apologize, Diane, if 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 this was not in the in the Google Drive.
So I'm just asking, is this in the Google Drive that you could show him now?
Uh, I, I think it is, David.
Yeah, okay, let me, let me see if I can bring that up.
I I can pop in there too, Dave.
Okay, revised twenty twenty two. Now that's the.
He also has order two months. I'm sorry? I have all that. I didn't bring it. Is that it? No.
No, that's not it.
Okay, but maybe it's not.
It it's, I'm I'm not, I'm not seeing it, no, um.
I think it's because, I think it's because the hard copies were delivered.
Right, that that that's correct. I I apologize for for these not being.
Yeah, that's, that's not the sixteen.
It's not the same.
That's not the same.
No, the, the, the survey that's before you were revised, October fifteenth.
Yeah, this is October fifteenth, so, yeah.
So we can make a motion with, to close the public hearing, conditionally approve this based on meeting
Agreed.
floodplain requirements.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, is that fair? David, we'll close the hearing, right?
Yeah, as as well as handicap accessibility.
Okay, I'm all right with that. Uh, I, I'm sorry, one more question, there was an issue with an easement, the building was in a portion of the.
Right, but until we answered.
Yeah.
So what we answered that at the last meeting.
That was a special.
Yeah. Yeah.
To Building Department, that's true.
No, the, the, the easement is 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 not a Building Department issue. The, the applicant at the last meeting was talking about the handicap uh accessibility and the ramp being a building.
That was the one.
Uh, which, which the 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 commission, if if they're so inclined, they can add showing the handicap ramp to the site plan as a condition of approval.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, so do we need to close, make a motion to close the public hearing first and then make a motion?
Yeah, we won't know.
You don't need a motion to close.
We don't need a motion to close anything, yeah. We could just say the, the public hearing be closed.
Yeah.
Well.
Yes, no?
Well, no, I I I just wanna make sure that, is is there any other? I just, I just wanna make sure we're not going into getting new information after we close the public hearing.
Nope, we're not.
No, no.
I don't think so.
Okay, no, 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 so I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we have a reason that we need to fill it in, so.
Okay, well, Todd, Todd thinks he do.
Okay. And, you know. You guys have any other questions?
No, I think Todd, Todd said, when he said conditional approval, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that, yeah, I think that it's just the the flood, flood requirements and and handicap accessibility.
There we go. Either way, we had to close it, cuz we have no extensions up here, so.
No, we.
We have to close the public hearing.
Yes, we're closing the public hearing first day of September, right? Yeah, whatever, it's done, yeah. Because the public hearing is closed.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion that we conditionally approved thirty two Henry Street as submitted on the conditions that uh.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I have a draft approval, which I'd like to see.
Right, right, well, does, does, does the commission need to uh a motion to add this work session to the agenda?
No, it's already there, David. Yes, I'm ahead of the game here.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, that, that's where we, that's where we are.
So so that's, so that's what we just introduced, Madam Vice Chair.
We're in the work session.
Okay, so for Brussels, thirty two Henry Street, side plan, special permit. Does, does the, does the commission have a consensus that they would want to approve this application?
I think so.
I, I, I just, I wanna make sure I hear from everybody before we discuss this.
Do we have a consensus that we're gonna?
Everybody?
We're good, Kitty.
Okay.
Okay.
I will bring.
Jeff, are you good? Mike?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Kitty? Bob?
Doug, good.
Okay.
I was out here.
Oh, where are we? No, this is.
I have a, we're done.
Go ahead.
I I am trying to retrieve the uh folder for the um.
Point, please, panel? We have a draft, right, you're just gonna be one.
All right. Resolution.
No, no.
Oh. Was everything in here we need?
Okay.
There is Kitty, Bob. Maybe I didn't. Bob doesn't have it out there.
Just a question.
I think David's trying to pull it up.
Stop slash placement of modular.
Where are we? Where are you?
Should be modular, yeah, you're right, there's a file. But it has sick after, so that must have been in there.
Right, right, so let let me, let me um. Okay, so so that I, that everybody can have a chance to quietly read this. Um, I'm going to. Where is the? Yes, there we go, okay. Bob, can you read this?
Yes.
Okay. Is this a good scroll speed?
That's good.
Okay.
I'm running right behind it.
I saw it, just now.
Yeah, we are gonna. Add a conditional approval.
Handicap accessibility and um, additionally, meaning the flood plain.
How it's flood plain.
So they have to read that?
Yes. To read those two. Amanda.
We have to reference us landserver?
All right, no problem.
No, I know, so, but, uh, wait, everybody's finished that with that, and then we can, you can add, you can.
Okay. Are you good?
Yeah.
Pretty good? Okay.
She had.
It, it, everybody's, everybody's, I, everybody's getting to the conclusion that I'm about to explain to everybody. Um, uh, so just, so just give me a minute here, if if you all don't mind. This draft resolution of approval was prepared before we discussed adding the conditions for uh addressing compliance with the flood zone regulations and uh showing the handicap ramp on the uh site plan. So if the commission wants.
And the easement?
If, well, the the easement's already shown.
Done.
Right, that, that.
Oh, I thought you said it wasn't here.
I know it's.
No, the easement's all been taken care of.
Right, right.
Sorry about the easements.
So we don't need it in here?
No.
Okay.
So, so um, if 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 the commission is so inclined, i- if if you want to direct staff to add those two conditions, I I will type those live for those to be added, and we can review the language in real time. The other question that's being asked among these commissioners is uh the the this, the uh the language that's in the application itself, quote, setup placement of modular sick building, okay? Modular is spelled M O D U L A R. It it was a misspell by the applicant. And so I I did not want to take license to correct that, so I just e- essentially reiterated the the application as as it was submitted with with that noted misspell, okay? It it, the the commission understands the intent of of what the applicant wants to do a- a- and staff understands the intent of what the applicant wants to do. The modular is spelled correctly on all of the other site plans, so I I don't think it's a non-issue, I think it's a non-issue. Um, a- a- and and that's, and that's why i- i- it was like as as it was. Uh, does the commission have any questions with any other, any of the other conditions as they're written?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
So I will add these in real time. Okay. Prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicants shall demonstrate that the site plans are in compliance with the believe it's floodplain management's overlay zone.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, section of the Bethel zoning regulations. Seven. Prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant oh, oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back to six real quick, shall revise the site plans.
Yeah.
Modify.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is, it's up there. Continuing it online as we speak.
To demonstrate compliance.
Like the floodplain management.
The applicants shall modify the site plans to show the placements of a and the cap rooms. Oh my goodness, I can't spell, I'm very sorry.
It's an N D I C A P.
Handicap accessible I, I think that's, i- i- is, can the commission think of any other way to uh phrase that? Uh, Mr. Ritchie, i- is is that? Uh.
Good.
So, the handicap, the rim can be handicap accessible, but then you get into the issues of the door and to.
So that'd be more. Yeah, sorry about that, cool.
So I'm wondering if you're better off saying in compliance with ADA requirements.
Yes, ADA, and and compliance with ADA standards, current.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, as, yeah, you know, current ADA standards, yeah.
Right. Thank you, Todd.
Yeah, but to input. I'm, I'm trying to say, I don't know if somebody has the flood zone, I, I or the flood regulation um uh section, just to confirm his language. Uh. I was just looking.
David, at number eight, you have cash and.
Little credit and or cash.
Okay.
And, yeah, they have and credit. Cash or credit? Cash, more credit, take the end.
Pretty good?
Yeah.
I just.
He changed.
Todd was asking about the.
Okay. I just want to confirm that I'm saying the correct section of the regulations myself. I'm gonna bring up the. Okay. This one sucks.
So, somebody else can read this.
No, no, you only, you don't need it. You only do one to eight. You just give the numbers. We don't read each one.
Floodplain overlay zone.
Oh, map, ten twenty-six?
October sixteen.
You know what? Twenty-two. You know what? Here's the simple way to do this.
I would say, I would say you have to floodplain overlay zone and floodplain management regulations.
Yeah, either that or I was just gonna say section five point one of the Bethel zoning.
Yeah, but I think you want to just state it. Yeah, and you could say section five point one and then just state the whole thing.
Yep, gotcha. Makes sense. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I appreciate it. Uh, here we go.
Um, eight items, David.
Hang on, I have a train of thought right now.
Wait a minute, there might be more. There could be more. Okay.
You just may want to save, uh, current ADA standards for the proposed building. So that it doesn't. Obviously, there's many buildings, but there you go. Yeah, there you go.
Get rid of and.
And get rid of the and, Dave.
I think that's like and.
And, number eight.
And number eight.
Oh, they're showing something more?
No, so it's saying and, and then it goes straight to number eight.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's how they're.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
I've never seen that before.
Does anybody see why we don't write these in the middle of the meeting?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience working with me through this in real time. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes.
I think you and Todd have done a great job.
Well, I, my hats off to Todd for clarifying what I seemingly could not. And doing so, I touched upon our, I appreciate your help.
Okay, would somebody like to make this motion, please?
I'll try again. I've tried several times.
Try again.
I'd like to make a motion, so once you're into the record, the approval. For thirty-two, uh, Henry Street. When we start to read the whole thing?
No, just one to eight. And then the reason at the end.
Oh, yeah, here, let me, let me put it up on the screen because that's not the right version anymore.
Oh, it's not, no, this part.
Did you change the header, though?
You changed the header?
No.
No, 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 no. But, but the reasons that are listed on there.
We don't leave the reasons.
Oh.
We only do.
One through eight.
Reasons one through eight.
Okay.
That's it, folks.
At the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-fourth, regular meeting of the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission voted to approve a site plan and special permit application for the following application, setup placement of a modular building. This approval for the property owned by Bethel Thirty-two Henry LLCs is subject to the following conditions. Conditions one through eight. Reason, the commission has carefully considered the application with regard to the project's location and site design and determined that this project will not imperil the health, safety, and the welfare of the community.
All in favor?
Ah, all right.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passed.
Can I answer? Did someone second?
Yeah.
I'll say all in favor.
Yeah, no one.
I, I'm sorry, I thought Spool did. That's why I said all in favor.
Sorry, I didn't.
Second.
Okay.
So, he did.
We're gonna get them.
Well, you don't have to say, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passed. Holding.
Motion.
No, okay.
Okay. Now, commission. Yes, now commission comments.
Yeah, now we're finally back in order.
Now, we're back in order. So, any, did any of the wonderful people have any? Go for it.
As we all know, we've been waiting for the traffic report for a while, the mobility, lochability, whatever we want to call it tonight, um, much. And we have a little bit of momentum with that as well as with the TOD. And I would like for this commission to consider formally scheduling time for we can review this, these two documents, perhaps without anything else being implicated at that time, so that it adds our undivided attention. That's my comment.
Well, would you want this to occur during a regular meeting or would you want to entertain this being held during a special meeting?
Personally, I think it should be during a regular meeting since we have to have public in attendance, not necessarily that I know whether or not they need to participate. But either way, I just don't want this to sit on the shelf for another X number of months.
Yeah.
And we have the holidays coming up and a month before we start with Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's. Before you know it, it's been another five months before we tackle what was discussed just a little while ago. That's my reason for.
What does our backlog look like? I know we've got a busy, uh, November twelfth meeting.
Well, we have, we have one item on the agenda for the twelfth, right?
Yeah.
I'm just accepting a new.
Oh, oh, Mr., oh, oh, the easy one, Mr.
And staff, staff is under the understanding that there will be two other applications that the commission accepts.
That are gonna be coming in?
Yes.
That will.
Just accept it, not to talk about it.
Right.
Well, that's, that's a five, three-minute effort. We got it. We schedule it.
Yeah, schedule for the public hearing.
Right, we can.
We're not gonna spend time on it.
Yeah.
If I'm wrong, correct me.
No, no, no. So, at the next meeting, we will have Mr. Draper. Okay. Uh, that could be wrong.
So, is this a public hearing or is this like a work session that we discuss the topics, all the points that the public made at the TOD? Like, it's more of a work session.
Well, I'm proposing a work session.
Right, okay.
Yeah, because I have, I have comments on.
I do too, yeah, I think we all do.
Yeah.
And, so, I, go ahead, David.
The, I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off.
I think we can handle it after Draper, don't you think, next time?
Possibly. Though, we could also, if we could suggest, we could add it to the work session and also decide to defer when we get.
That's right. So, why don't we add it for next, next meeting's agenda, under the work session? And if we notice that the clock is getting a little late.
We'll say the first thanks for me.
But, but I agree with Spool. It should be something that's put on the agenda so the public knows.
Absolutely right.
Right.
Thank you for bringing it up.
It needs to be a motion.
I, well, I need to do that. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be a motion.
No, it's.
I, I. I wouldn't think so, but, but the commission is requesting it to be put on the agenda. I just will note for clarification for the commission, the format for the last meeting where the TOD regulations were discussed, it was a public information session.
Yes.
So, the commission essentially had an open invitation for anyone that wanted to speak to be able to voice their opinions and offer comments to the commission. If you want this just to be a commission discussion.
Because we're putting it in the work session, right?
Then you would put it under work session.
Yes.
If you want to have another public information session. No, that's not.
Public information, we can discuss that after the fact, but this is just us, we didn't get a chance the other night to just have a conversation.
All right, put it this way. If, if we see that big changes should be made after that, then we can go to a public.
Yeah, right. The only reason why I, I'm, I'm, uh, being picky about this clarification is because I would not want this commission to be in a compromising situation where they're discussing the TOD regulations in front of the public and the public can't offer comments.
They can. There's gonna be comments after. They can have public input after.
At the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting, there's always public inputs.
That's, that's, that's true, but, uh, it, for, for, it, it work session, it's, it's, it's discussion that is, uh, you know.
Amongst ourselves.
It, right, it's, it's a discussion that's amongst yourselves.
Right.
So, I, I don't know how you would entertain.
Well, how do we schedule the work session?
We just ask the agenda.
Yeah, you can ask the agenda. That's very simple.
David, I could put underneath the, on the work session, say no public comments or at the beginning of the meeting, state there'll be no public comments during the work session.
We never have.
I know, I'm just saying, if someone's here thinking they could talk.
I, I don't think that would be necessary. I, I think.
Because as he said, if, after our discussion, the public would like to make comments, there is a public comment section at the end of the meeting. But if they wanted to add something, then that's fine. Why not?
I think it's time for us, just as a board, to digest what we heard at the last meeting and talk about it amongst ourselves.
Sure, sure.
I agree.
Okay. I have a question. In the binder, there are a few spots where it needs to be changed for the TOD. You know, with the twenty units per acre and that kind of thing.
You're talking about the regulations or the report?
No, the regulations.
Okay.
I mean, so we don't have them up to date. I, mine, that's the change in mine. No, I can tell you mine is not. And I got it in a line.
So.
Because we, we had to vote on that later. Yeah. Well, unless you got something separate. We don't have that in there. So, we, we need to have that updated in our binders.
Okay.
Any of those changes on the TOD that when they.
One part of the thing we discussed that we never really got a chance to talk about is all those changes that Beth talked about at the beginning of last public hearing, that we would have an amendment on the website that says, here's the changes since the TOD was adopted.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna have on a cheat sheet, take a thing, and when they were adopted. And that's something we can talk about after work.
Last meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't seen, we haven't done that yet.
Right, right. And I think that's where the miscommunication.
Yeah. You know, a lot of sections, you know, that we needed to change. From thirty units to twenty units per acre. From thirty to twenty. I have that in mind. I have that in mind. I can. I have, I have. Get, get a copy of that because it's, it's in my, it's in my book, where it went from thirty units to twenty.
Okay. Let, let me, let me clarify whether or not a revised version of the regulations exists. If it does, we will make a point to make sure it's distributed to everyone.
Yeah.
If not, I will advise best to have, uh, some kind of a report potentially available for the commission during their next meeting.
What you're talking about is of the changes we made.
Right, right.
Well, and then there was the one that we had to vote separately because the density wasn't done. So, that was twenty and there's a lot of spots under assisted living uses. A lot of other spots where it says thirty and it should be twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can show you because I looked at it.
Sure, I, I, I don't want to speak for Beth with where she is in that process, if she hasn't completed it already.
Yeah.
But I will bring this to her attention when she comes back to make sure it is addressed for that work session on the twelfth. Because I, I think that would be a very appropriate time for her to discuss that with you.
Agreed.
Good.
Hey, everyone else, don't forget that on the fifth, we don't have a meeting.
November fifth, election day?
Oh, yeah.
So, that, that's the first.
That would have been our.
No.
Well, that's the first Tuesday.
No, it's the second.
Yeah, not every two weeks. Yeah.
Yeah, if, 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 if.
We have that once, though, because once, once it was, the first was, and then election day was like. Because it was as late as it could be and we had, we had to do that.
Yeah, if the commission ever has a meeting.
So, we have it on Wednesday.
Seventh of the month, it's usually because they've scheduled a special meeting.
Yeah. We have meetings on Wednesdays.
Kitty, we have to ask the public?
Public comments. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One, is there anyone in the public who has a comment on anything?
Yeah.
You want to comment on? Raise your hand, please.
Todd said no.
I've had enough. Todd said I've had enough of you people. Who I doesn't want to? Okay. Then I guess we're going to say.
Most can do adjourn.
Adjourn, second, second.
Most, all in favor?
All right.
Do that, except for not.
All right.
You're not gonna do it at the end?
Very good, everybody. Thank you.
So, again. I got an interesting text as we were talking.